And now we are ready to hear from our facilities committee.
Vaughn, will you be?
Yep.
Perfect.
Hi, everybody. Vaughn Dirks with World Architects and Engineers here. We facilitated the long-range planning committee for this, so we've the same process that we do in the past. When we do that, we have a lot of different community members and stakeholders involved, but I always let them know none of them signed up to be public speakers. And so I'm going to be representing the group tonight on what we talked about there. We do have Jeremy and Hannah to help us out a little bit with some comments at the end of this, but I'll walk you through the process of what we took a look at and what their recommendation is, and then we'll talk a little bit about next steps. Sound good? Great. So.
What was it not? Do you think it won't work? It's a different program?
Yeah. Oh, let's try it. Moving forward. So I'll give you a quick overview of the process here. Then we'll talk a little bit about previous planning issues and discussions before getting into diagrams, then some discussion around the criteria development. And any questions that come up, certainly please ask, and I'm happy to answer them as we go forward. Next. So you might remember this diagram. You don't have to read all the words on the side. This will be available for people to look at afterwards. But we really look at long-range planning as it's sort of like Maslow's hierarchy of needs. You have to deal with physical conditions of a building before you can get up to some of those upper-level things that are more related to capacity and enrollment, then safety and security, programming, and eventually activities and community use in the buildings. And so we walked through each one of those steps to take a look at where do the facilities stand now? What needs to be addressed? And how do you start prioritizing those as we go forward? Next. Really, you can look at these types of questions are the ones that we would ask any district, and then from there, the discussion starts. What are the physical conditions of the building? What do you have to address now? What's critical where you might have asset deterioration if you don't address it? You can certainly think of this as your house. If you have a bad roof, you need to replace the roof before you ever start talking about remodeling a bathroom, for example. Second is capacity of the buildings. How do the buildings hold the number of students that you have, not only now, but for the projected enrollment for the future? Third, safety and security. What additional steps need to be taken from where you stand currently? Fourth, and this was one that really starts to look at how you teach now versus how you might want to teach in the future, is how do the buildings align with your educational delivery models? After that, we get into how do you take a look at extracurricular activities, whether those are performing arts, athletics, other types of activities in the building? And finally, because the community members are the people paying for all this, how do the buildings function beyond education, beyond the extracurricular activities, and what needs to be addressed in the buildings as we go forward? So we take a look at each one of these steps as we go forward. And if you think about it, this is exactly what we did in 2017, 18, as we went through the last process, which brings us to the next slide. And at the end of that process before, these were the criterias and the priorities from that standpoint. Number one at that time was security, making sure you had secure entries in the buildings. Number two was maintenance, dealing with some of those top priority maintenance items, especially at the middle school and the high school. Third was site improvements, untangling a lot of the traffic mess that was happening on the site. Fourth, a lot of programming changes, making sure the middle school and the high school matched the educational delivery models that both schools were working towards at that time, and moving towards more flexible learning, personalized learning spaces, especially at the high school. Fifth was activities, athletics and community, rebuilding the track, auxiliary gym, stadium improvements. And the sixth was auditory. As we went through that and started to... Next slide, please. So to look at the pricing, that came out to a fairly large price tag at that time. You spent some time, those of you who are on the board, looking at this and determining what made the most sense moving forward. Next slide. There was really that line drawn between the base option of dealing with the educational items, the security items, the maintenance items, but saying additional gym space, the outdoor activity space, and auditorium probably had to be a second priority as we went forward to take a look at how you might package that by referendum. Twenty-eight point six million above, and then line items for the other items below. Next slide. And that's really what that referendum was. It didn't mean that the needs didn't exist for those other items, but at that time, you said, "We have to address these things. We have to move forward with these items going forward." And that's what passed in the last referendum. Next slide. So that started the discussion really of those were needs not that long ago. Are those still needs? What are we taking a look at now as we move forward? So we started our conversation with the group around, "What are your preliminary thoughts around what your priorities are today?" Just, you know, right off the top, without looking at anything else. If you had to answer the question today, what would you set a priority for? First thing that came up was, you know, we did a lot of maintenance at the middle school and the high school, but the elementary school has maintenance to do, which is surprising. Sometimes people think of that as, "Well, that's a new building. We don't have maintenance to do there," but that building is 20-plus years old at this point. The stadium improvements didn't get better with time. You know, the track still needs to be rebuilt. We had issues around bleachers. And it's a natural turf field versus synthetic turf. That was still an item for discussion. Auditorium still remained a discussion there, 600 seats, with making some improvements at the common space. That's currently a shared auditorium use. Additional gym space was still in need. However, at the time, in 2018, we're talking about a single gym at the high school, but the need exists probably for more than that. Even with scheduling, one gym probably just doesn't make it. And so it would be at least two gyms. And then there's a lot of discussion around community use. How does that impact as you move forward? And having a master plan for growth, understanding if, with we have new houses coming in, the community is growing, how do we plan for that was some of those previous concerns. And then we had some new topics for discussion on there. Even though we untangled a significant amount of the traffic going to the northwest, where it tapers down to two lanes, still have backups happening around the elementary school. There's probably some, a little bit of untangling still to do there. Drastically better at the high school and the middle school, but if you're coming in from the north side, you've still got some of those wait and turn lane issues. Had a lot of conversation around, should we be thinking about a fieldhouse and a community center type of approach? Should we be looking at more for the community members? Moving all the ball fields onto campus so that you've got a contiguous campus was part of the discussion. Should there be maybe a community center complex, as I mentioned? Looking at the hockey facility, locker rooms there was part of our discussion. Maybe an additional sheet of ice. Elementary, in addition to the maintenance, the playground was a big topic of discussion, and as well as location of gyms. If we're talking about a gym, should it be at an elementary? Should it be at a high school? Storage is always an issue in any district we look at. And we did have some other discussion around, what about pool? What about gymnastics? And the group said, "You know, that's probably not a high priority for us based on what we have currently, especially with everything else on the table." So this was the start of the discussions, putting everything out there and saying, "What do we need to take a look at?" Next slide. So let's start with the base of that pyramid, maintenance projects. As I mentioned, the elementary 2001, you're at that 20-plus year mark. And if you think about the number of things in a building and the lifecycle attached to it, a lot of things come due at about 20 years. Roof is about a 20-year timeline. Flooring is about 10 years, so if you go a couple of cycles into that. Painting is about every 10 years. Mechanical systems last a little bit longer, but there's a lot of items at the elementary school that are needing to be addressed. The middle school, we're down to just doing renovation-type spaces there. We've got some LED lighting conversions, but those are more return-on-investment types of things. Mentioned that the site, the track, still is probably the largest issue from a maintenance standpoint in terms of rebuilding it. There's a few drainage areas on the site that probably also need to be addressed. At the high school, boiler conversions pending items. Again, some of those LED lighting items. Maybe 10 years from now, roofing. But there was a narrative that was coming out that the district really did a lot of work in the last referendum to address the middle school and the high school, but the elementary school has those pending needs. At 20 years old at this point, there's some things that have to be addressed at the elementary school. And if we look at the range, elementary all the way through high school, that's sort of in that $5 to $10 million range of maintenance needs. So if you start with the base of the pyramid and think, even if we do nothing else, we have to maintain the buildings, that's sort of a starting point for looking at facilities. We have to maintain them in that dollar amount. Next slide. Next item was capacity versus enrollment, and a lot of discussion around the houses being built and what that means for you as a community. So we looked at where we are currently with the buildings, what work was done previously, and what our new capacity of the buildings is, which is a little over 1,780 is what the buildings can hold in a perfect scenario, meaning every grade is the, you know, the perfect size going through. And you know, they ebb and flow a little bit. But your enrollment is less than that. We've got room in the buildings to actually add about 15 to 25 per grade before you get to that capacity standpoint. And to put that in perspective, that would mean you'd have to grow a little bit over 2% annually continuously for the next 10 years to hit that capacity mark. So we're good in terms of capacity in the building. We know that each one of those grades can get up to about 175 to 180 per grade before you hit the capacity mark coming in. And you're only at about 110 to 135 right now as you look at your grade levels. So we're pretty good from that standpoint. Next slide. Then we started to take a look at the buildings and said, "If you do have to expand," because we have to think about this master plan and think long-term, "where would we expand out?" And so these are some diagrams showing how capacity was generated at the buildings, how we look at that, where the possible expansions would go. Elementary, its design says, "We could put additions on in each direction going out, but we'd still have to address things like the size of the cafeteria if you added more kids into it." We don't have a lot of room to expand out towards the northeast on that building, but we could expand those wings. Next slide. Middle school is a little bit more of a challenge. We've got boundaries on the north side of that, the west side of that, that make it really difficult to go out. We could add some classrooms there. You'd have to add some specialist space as well, because it's not just about the classrooms. Once you get to middle school, you have to have a little bit more of your art space, your music space, those types of things. It's a little bit of room, but that cafeteria space doesn't have a lot of room for expansion. There's no adjacent rooms we could take over and say, "We can just make that area bigger." And so this building is a little bit more of a challenge as we think about expansion. And at the high school, high school is very much like the elementary. We've got a lot of room that we can expand classrooms there. We've got space we can expand gyms. We've got space we can expand specialist spaces. We do know on the one side, we're bounded by where our traffic concerns are, but we've got areas to expand there. Also, as we start to think about what types of expansions we would look at, varsity athletics typically located at high schools. That's usually where it is. And so as we talk about gym space, we'd want to make sure that we had enough room for those large component types of diagrams. And I bring this up not because we just got done talking about how you don't have to expand your enrollment right now, but you want to have a plan for the future. So the next slide just shows on the site where we expand. That's an easy one. We'll go to the next slide. This looked at three potential scenarios for how we might expand for the future. The reason this is important is because you want to make sure that any decisions you're making now are thinking long-term for the future. So we said, "Scenario one would be another school on the site." So that are three buildings having four buildings on the site. Potentially, a new, another elementary school, whether it's a new 3-5 or another K-2, where you take the number of students that are in the elementary right now and take the fifth grade out of the middle school and say, "We could make two equal-sized elementary schools on the campus." The middle school, then, by taking kids out of it, actually helps your capacity at that building, because now as you grow into it, you've got one less grade, so you've got more room. And the high school could have an addition on to it to expand. So that would easily accommodate your 175 to 180 kids, and it provides a little bit more flexibility on the site. Takes some of the pressure off those spaces like cafeterias, helps with adding some additional drivelanes and turn lanes coming into it, actually expands some of the site offerings in terms of ball fields. So that's one option. A second one was saying, "What if you just put additions on the elementary school and the high school? Make the high school very large, and maybe make the middle school and the elementary school your two elementary-based buildings? Middle school would become maybe 4-6 in that scenario. Elementary is K-3. And you move all your secondary students 7-12 at the high school." Again, just testing these scenarios as we looked out. The third one was something that always comes up is, almost every community we work with always says, "What if we just build a new high school?" Because everybody likes new high schools. So now you're building for four grades as you do that. We have room on the site to do it. Your high school would become a middle school, a 6-8 building. Middle school becomes one of those elementary schools. Elementary school gets a little bit smaller, K-2. Similar to scenario one, but you're actually overbuilding by about a grade. So we had a conversation with the committee about this and pros and cons for this. And the next slide, they ruled out scenario two and three and said, "These don't really make sense for us," for a couple of reasons. One, nobody liked the grade structure of that scenario two, having a seventh grade through 12th grade altogether. Similar for the new high school, that 4-6 model didn't really promote the middle school environment. Middle school has too many specialist spaces in it currently to really be useful as an elementary school. You're likely not going to use some of those specialist spaces at the elementary level, so turning that into an elementary didn't make as much sense. Without having that fourth building, there's a lot more congestion inside the building still on site, and you're overbuilding by a full grade in scenario three. So they said, "Really, ideally, it's probably a future building for us at some point, 10 years out from now, unless you rapidly grow in the coming years." So having an idea of where that might go became an important part of our discussion. Next slide. So we just said, "Given the existing site that you have, you've only developed about half of the land that you own right now. Plenty of room to put another building on that site to expand without even starting to take out some of those trees on the northern part of the site. Gives us another lane to potentially bring traffic out to the site." So as we think about things for the future, preserving that space for another fourth building on the campus, still keeping your campus setting, became part of our discussions. Now, taking a look at the current site, it doesn't mean that we don't have some site issues that we have to take a look at. As I mentioned, most of the traffic issues are up to the north and the west. We've still got backups around the elementary school coming in. Lot of things have been resolved around the other parts of the site. We've separated the buses and the cars. That's working very well on campus. Soccer needs better game field conditions. Beautiful grass out there, but doesn't have the lighting and the bleachers and the other things that are at the stadium. Elementary playground, as I mentioned, is one of the site issues that need to be addressed. So we put this in the back of our head and said, "Okay. Anything we look at, has to make sure that we're resolving these issues as well." Next slide. From a security and educational programming standpoint, then, we said, "What do we do in 2018 and what's left to do?" All the buildings have had their security issues updated. We did the secure vestibules at the building. We've done a lot in terms of the communication system, so people felt, security-wise, we're in really good shape. We addressed that before. As well as, the middle school and the high school are aligned to the educational philosophy. You have all of those flexible learning spaces now really working well for what you wanted to do. We talked about that at the elementary level and said, "Do we need to create those spaces at the elementary level?" And the committee felt that, "No, the elementary actually is appropriate for what we're doing there. We don't need as much of that flexible learning space, because the students are spending more of their time in the classroom as opposed to autonomous or independent learning." So probably not as much of an issue, which is a nice position to be in as you go forward. So then it came down to what's unresolved here. And this is a list of all items from 2018. And I highlighted some of the red ones that are still big issues. Not enough gym stations at the high school and the middle school. You still have your scheduling issues there. As I mentioned, we looked at the scheduling going out, and one gym barely covers it. It's more likely one plus or one and a half gyms that are needed to schedule in all the practices, especially around winter-based sports. Not a big surprise in our climate. We've got a lot more indoor activities happening at that point. Auditorium still, it's that commons multipurpose use. You can do it. It's just a compromised issue in terms of performance spaces. The track really needs to be rebuilt. That's a maintenance item, but having that additional lane to it, having synthetic turf allows you a different type of competition for the students there. It would also allow you to move soccer over to the stadium, because now with the synthetic turf, you can play on that. Even after a rain like we just experienced here 10 minutes later, you could be out there playing on that field without damage to it. So it really changes the way you think about things. As we talked about baseball and softball, the ability to potentially even have those as turf fields would give you some additional practice space for soccer, for football, other things in different seasons. And then just stadium upgrades in general. The bleachers, the concessions, the scoreboard, the press box were all items that we talked about with the group. So we knew that we had those issues to resolve when we got up to that athletics and activities component. So after a lot more discussion saying, "Okay, gang, this is a big list. How do we start to prioritize this?" The areas in gray said, "Okay, if we had to start prioritizing, those are the things that we maybe say, 'We're not going to get to this time.'" Or, "We have to have them on the list, but they might not be something we address." For example, the community center complex started to drop away in saying, "Let's focus on the students. Let's focus on what we need. Maybe there's spaces the community still accesses, like walking track, things you can do in the winter, but maybe we're not building a five-station or a six-station fieldhouse." And we looked at lots of different models for how this might work. Playground is an important component to this, but adding another gym at the elementary at this time wasn't as high of a priority, especially if you're looking down the road at a potential fourth building. You would have an additional elementary gym there, and that might be the more appropriate time to have that. In the meantime, your sports are the ones that need that practice space, and having that over at the high school or the middle school made more sense. I already mentioned the pool and gymnastics came out the list. But locker rooms at the hockey arena, that one became sort of a, "It's definitely a need, but if that's not a school building, is that something where the school should be putting the money to?" And so we went back and forth on that a little bit as we moved forward as well. We also looked at, should the stadium be rebuilt where it is or should it be in a new location? So we looked at rebuilding a stadium where the current soccer field is. It's a little bit of a problem there. It's disruptive while you're building it. It doesn't give us a lot of options for resolving some of the traffic issues. But more importantly, it really starts to limit where the high school could potentially expand or need to expand. It's not cheap either. And so that one was something that we took a look at and studied, but said, "It's probably not feasible. Let's look at fixing what's there as opposed to building it and completing a new location." And so the site, we were able to fine-tune a little bit more from that, said, "We definitely need to rebuild the track. We can add that ninth lane, which gives a functionality to it. Adding synthetic turf at the stadium, as well as bleachers and press box, and additional driveline going out towards the northwest." Because the concessions and tickets are in decent shape, that's probably not part of this. We're trying to be cost-conscious as a group, so getting that price tag down a little bit more. Additional stadium parking, maybe at some point in the future, but that also said, "If we're trying to get down to a lower dollar amount, plan for where that might go, but don't include that at this time." And so we looked at saying, "Okay, stadium is maybe $6 to $7 million on the project." So after a lot of discussion with the group, this was the storyline that emerged, starting with the base of the pyramid again. Number one, there are maintenance projects to plan for. Our elementary school is 20 years old. It's time for us to take a look at addressing that. Even though people think of that as a new building, it's not new anymore. It's a full-grown adult at this point. And so we have to make sure that we're putting the same care towards the elementary school that we did towards the other buildings. Capacity of the buildings worked well for what we have now, and we have a plan for where another building would go in the future. We know how we would expand the site. It's been designed for. It's accommodating our plans, so that will help us make short-term decisions. But at this point, there aren't capacity issues that we have to address. We have to be cognizant of what's going in, but that's coming down the road. In the last referendum, we addressed our security concerns. We feel like the schools match our expectations for what we want to do from a security standpoint. And we also updated the buildings at the middle school and the high school for our educational needs in the last referendum. We made significant improvements at both the secondary buildings and our elementary school works well for what we're doing. At this time, our biggest needs are related to extracurricular activities, things that provide communities or opportunities for our kids, and the community in turn benefits from those spaces. So what we're looking at at this point, same type of list on the left, the existing previous, and define that new discussion and redefine development needs. We have to address the remaining traffic issues. Fieldhouse, either two or three stations at the high school with a walking track and a cardio room would provide not only opportunities for the student athletes, but the community as well. And all the ball fields at the campus, starting with at least one baseball, softball, master plan for a full complex to move those over there. Potential for synthetic turf there, as well as planning for scoreboards and lights if we're going to have larger games at those facilities. So master planning what it would be, starting maybe smaller and getting larger. These are diagrams showing how that high school would expand to accommodate both a performing arts space as well as gym space. This is showing the larger version of a three-station gym moving out to the northwest at the high school. Auditorium would allow you a separate entrance coming in, have the ability to redo some of the parking there. Music could load directly into the stage from the back. Works fairly well on the site to provide those expansions at the high school. Next slide shows a slightly smaller version at two stations. Both still have the walking track, just a little bit smaller walking track and it's two-station, obviously. Gyms are easy for us to plan how they would expand. So just because if you were to do two stations now doesn't mean that would preclude you from adding another station, taking off the end wall and really making that even larger fieldhouse in the future. Precast wall panels allow you to do that. So the recommendation from the committee that they want to bring forward to the board is this. And we have a range on there, because right now, I'm sure you're aware, inflation has got numbers all over the board, and so we're trying to be conservative in this. Maintenance projects, stadium and site improvements, auditorium, some parking revisions related to how we'd expand the high school, additional three gyms and baseball and softball with synthetic turf. So it's a range of 46 to 55-plus million. Down below is two-gym option. And they know that that's discussion for the board in terms of whether that would be two or three. And they also know that this is the full list of all items, and that may not be where the community support is right now. So they're recommending some additional survey or discussion to determine what that list is. As I said, I'm simply giving you sort of the conversation and the discussion, but we do have some people here that can help with that. Jeremy and Hannah, maybe you want to add a little bit of thoughts in terms of the need behind this.
Hello. My name is Hannah Lammers, and I live and have kids here in the Somerset District. My husband volunteers for a lot of the youth sports. I'm the head of the elementary parent group. And I got involved in the facilities committee planning because I'm really invested in this community, and I want to provide the best opportunities for our youth now and going forward.
And I'm Jeremy Muscia. I've been a part of the community for a better part of 15 years. I got two students. One's leaving. Still have one student in the district. I have been involved in a lot of the coaching aspects since my kids were in T-ball, all the way through. So I've coached T-ball, softball, youth basketball, both boys and girls, middle school football, and also varsity girls' basketball. So I've seen a lot of the scheduling issues that we've had with indoor and outdoor facilities that we have in our community right now.
Yeah, so we were invited to speak on some of these pieces of the referendum and just as, because we're involved and we've seen it and been a part of it. And just to kind of speak on some of that insufficient facilities and spaces that we currently have, because we want to be able to meet the demands of our current and future students. So one of the things that Vaughn kind of discussed was like that capacity issue. You know, if we didn't have enough capacity for the students and classrooms, we would build more classrooms. And luckily, that's not our issue at the moment, but we do have an issue with capacity in terms of field and gym space. We have more kids involved and more teams involved, and there's room to fit in our current gyms and fields. And so that is a need that we do have.
Couple months ago, we had a softball parent meeting for varsity sports. My daughter started in 10U softball, you know, eight years ago now. And we roughly had 30 kids in the youth girls' softball program. Right now, we have about 25 on the JV and varsity level, but once you get below that, there's over 100 girls that are now involved in youth softball, which is a fantastic thing, that girl's sports are really growing at such a pace. You know, ESPN and all the sporting, they're helping that. They're helping drive that right now. They're finally televising girls' volleyball and girls' softball on TV, which is such an awesome thing. My wife was softball board president for a few years, and this is when we only had the four or five girls' teams that needed field space. And she would spend weeks with high school representatives and youth baseball representatives trying to figure out where and when everybody can access fields. And I mean, just with St. Anne's had four fields. You have the three fields at Village Park, which the baseball field really wasn't utilized because it was too big for any of the youth stuff anyway. And then, you know, we all know the condition of our middle school baseball field. And then we had Christ Lutheran and Village Park, which also have their struggles. So, I mean, you'd get girls to get maybe two practices a week. It was usually one. I mean, a lot of times, we would go to one of the parents' houses, and we would practice in their backyard. I mean, so it's a real struggle, so.
And the practices that end up going later in the evening too, which cuts in on our kids' time to study and sleep. I think another awesome piece, bringing these updated facilities to our community is that it benefits all the community. It's not just kids that are in certain sports, it's every kid on campus will use these spaces and the entire community can not only, you know, have access to those walking tracks and those fields, but then, you know, when we have a track where we can host meets, we're bringing people here to, you know, spend money in our community. And it really, it's only an upward spiral in the progress and the benefit that it has to our community, it's worth every, every cost. And I think it's a really, the capacity issue and the fact that we have so many kids going out for sports, it's a good problem to have. I do know people personally who do go to other communities, Stillwater, Hudson, New Richmond, because if we don't have the space or the timing, that they go other places. And we really, we want them here because these programs are awesome.
So a little bit more getting into like stadium improvements. We talked about this one at length too, with putting turf down on the field. It actually will help, the scoreboard issue, we have such beautiful video scoreboards in our gymnasium right now and everybody loves them, but they also pay for themselves with advertising. There's volleyball games, there's basketball games, there's wrestling, there's all kinds of events that happen in that gymnasium where people who want to advertise, they get the vision out of their advertisements. Our scoreboard at the, at our football field is past deterioration state. But the problem with trying to get a really nice video scoreboard out there is, we have four, maybe up to six events at our stadium a year, that's it. It's tough to ask a business to advertise on that board for six times a year. So especially with going turf, expanding the track, so we're hosting track meets, we have soccer games, we can now host varsity and JV soccer because now we will have lights, varsity games, JV, C-team football games, you know, even middle school games. You're really starting to get more people in the facility to entice businesses to want to advertise on that board and I know Trent has always said, he goes out there three times a summer just to make sure that it turns on, hoping that there's not a problem once football season starts. So it's just, that's going to be just another benefit too as well, having that all redone.
Yeah, and we've kind of been talking more about the gym and field space because we feel like there's less information about that in the community about the need for that. Obviously, on the referendum is that auditorium support and I feel like, to me, that's a no-brainer, we don't have an auditorium and we have amazing kids that would fill and use that space that haven't had the opportunity to perform an auditorium. So I was able to go to the musical that was put on a few months ago and they did such a great job, but we were in a cafeteria, you know, and so obviously, like I said, we're talking more about the sports because hopefully, auditorium's a no-brainer, that we have to have that. But we, we need this to other facilities just as much as we need an auditorium.
Yeah, and getting into the gym space, this spring, prime example, I mean, it's always a struggle with basketball season when you have, you know, fourth grade through eighth grade, youth teams trying to get practice, and then you also have the varsity and JV and C-team trying to get practice time. So, I mean, when I was coaching youth boys' basketball and youth girls' basketball, our practices wouldn't be till Saturday, eight o'clock at night. So you're taking little kids, going home, eating dinner, coming back out, doing, doing all the stuff that you need to do for practice and trying to keep their attention. But this, the spring is also a big, big issue. We just spent a lot of money and time in our gym, making it look, it was the nicest gym in our conference, I can honestly say that. They did a fantastic job with the bleachers and the floor. And if you go in there right now, there is shot foot marks and there's baseball marks and there's everything else. Because our spring, and this isn't an anomaly spring, where we're inside a lot, the girls spent their first probably five weeks inside practicing. The boys did the same thing, track had to do the same thing. So now you have three varsity and JV sports trying to utilize two spaces, which neither one of them are big enough for any of them. There was a time where the track team was running through the high school for their practices. So we decided three gyms would be, would be fantastic, we could probably get away with the two just because, like you had mentioned, we can expand it if we need to later. And that would, you know, A, keep our varsity gym a lot nicer, but it would also allow the space for our spring sports to actually put in the work that they, that they deserve and desire, so.
Yeah, and just the last thing that I want to say and emphasize, there are other communities that already, other communities our size that already have these facilities. So we really need to step up our game because like our, our facilities really should match the performance of our students. And we already have amazing students that are doing amazing things and we really need the facilities to rise the level of where they're already performing.
So, and just to curtail that, I recently got to, I was invited to the Excellence in Education Program where they recognized 15 of our seniors this year. And I want to say 14 of them were either involved in volleyball, softball, basketball, hockey, soccer, choir, band, musicals, everything that is, that we're looking for here. We hold our students to a standard, we hold our student athletes to a higher standard. They're the ones that are actually utilizing this space right now and I say, let's bring in more to raise the standards that way. You know, I see a little bit on Facebook that we need to spend our money on education. Our students are all, the ones that are using the stuff are already the higher end of a lot of the student achievement in this district. And I hate to see us say, you don't need it, we do need it, and let's not penalize the ones that are actually bringing up our district in the academics as well, so. And then the other thing I want to say, I think this is also the largest National Honor Society class, the senior class, I think there's 35, and I would guess that it's close to 30 of those kids that are also involved in all of those activities that this will benefit from. Obviously, they're not going to get to use it. My son does sophomore right now, he may not get to use any of this stuff by the time that it's all, all built. That's not, that's not my priority, my priority is for the kids coming up, that hopefully they will just take everything and run with it and continue to do the district proud.
And the whole community.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So I didn't have to worry about task force members being enthusiastic about what it is that they've been talking about. And I realized as they were talking, what I forgot to put in was a slide showcasing all the task force members. You had a lot of really good voices at this, very enthusiastic voices. Oftentimes, we were trying to get the group, hey, whoa, come back, come back over here, let's, let's talk about what makes this most sense and how we do this. And so I think you're probably aware of the enthusiasm of the group that worked on this, and we'll add that slide to it. I want to move forward one slide here because, you know, we were mentioning the referendum and that's not decided yet, that's, that's for you to decide how to best take a look at meeting needs and that's, that's something for a group. From a planning group, they, they did talk about, spent a lot of time saying, you know, if we're going to do this, how would you do this? And they, they wanted you to know that they felt a single question if you did a referendum would be what they would recommend, but again, that's board discussion. Next steps would be taking a look at, if this is the list of needs you have, how do you identify, is this what the community would support? And the best way to do that is surveying, you've done that in the past, so I think you know the value of the survey. That's a really good way of isolating the components, taking a look at each one of them, seeing and making sure that you have support before you would ever decide on how to implement that. And if there's any additional factors that come out of it. The surveying companies that you've worked with in the past are really good at identifying other things that aren't related to facilities that may also be a red flag or an item for you to consider as a board. Once we narrowed in, said, is this what you want to do, if you were to decide a referendum, we'd be formalizing those budgets, getting that range narrowed in, making sure we have the exact scope defined for each of those components, and so we'd be able to take that range and get it down to a single dollar amount as you move forward. But this is the recommendation of the group, this is what they wanted you to consider and think about as a board. And so with that, happy to answer any questions. A lot to throw at you.
Well, this item will definitely come back to the regular session for decision, but we have all these people here, if you want to ask questions, does anybody have anything they want to comment on or ask?
When do you want, when do we need to make our decision, Von, by what we want to send out or when do we need that information back so we can get it done in, I think it's November?
No, you've got to, if you're going to hold, if you're going to run on a November election, which is that, we kind of geared towards that, you've got to make a decision in August as far as what's going to be on the ballot.
We've got to have all the surveying and everything done.
Right, so we're going to get on the surveying as soon as possible, so you have some time to, you know, because the community will tell you basically what, where the support is. And then you've got decisions as far as what's going to be on that ballot, if it's a one or two question ballot, you know, what stays, where's the support, what's not. So, you know, as we've said before, take it one step at a time, the next step is that survey. Regardless of what's on the survey, the community will tell us.
Is it, did we use school perceptions last time?
Yes.
And I know, something that Hannah and I have just talked about is making sure that, you know, we have to decide, I guess what we want on there, but that the information that's out there when people get the questions, get an answer, that they have all the background information of why this is happening instead of just, you know, I don't know Hannah, exactly what you were telling me, but it was, we want to fill out cards, you know, like we did before, this is why we're doing the referendum. But before they take the survey, so they know, this is why we're doing this, so when you take the survey, you're not just shooting it down right away. So we get the right information, because that's kind of what happened last time where we had support for the first ones and the second ones, you know, the options three, four, and five, we were, weren't quite sure, but maybe if we would have pushed it a little harder on the front end, we would have known, we would have had enough, but we just couldn't take the chance, but.
Well, in the survey for the referendum that we passed in 2018, the, what the community was support was very clear, I mean, and I think you remember that. And that's, and there's also laws about how many questions you can ask.
But for the survey, I guess.
Yeah.
So, you know, in the survey, that's also a time to educate. That's why there's a lot of information that goes into building survey, because you're educating at the same time you're asking them for their input. And that doesn't say we can't preclude that by sending out other information that, hey, a survey is going to be coming out to you, which we typically do, and this is what it's all about, and present more information to it. You know, in the last, you know, for the last referendum, you know, we weren't that far off from those second questions, but we, you know, we knew we couldn't jeopardize the first, you know, the maintenance and the excess level piece of it, and we didn't want to take that chance. You know, you can second guess everything afterwards that, hey, maybe we could have put that auditorium on there, but it wasn't worth the risk at the time. And from that time on, every time I've gone out to a group, when are you going to run that second half? You know, so this is the second half from that original referendum.
Yeah, I would just say, Bruce, I agree with you, I think that education's a huge piece. In one of the last surveys we did, there was some comments that we don't have a baseball team, we don't have a high school hockey team in some of the comments. And for, for people also taking that survey, you know, they, they don't know all those pieces, so you've got to make sure we educate and we get it. The second thing is I would say, thank you to all of you that were on that committee. I sat in as many of those meetings as I could, I didn't make all of them. So for those of you that were there and offered input, I really thank you. And just for anybody listening or the rest of the board, I mean, this is a sampling of all kinds of different people throughout the community, some that don't have kids in the district anymore, some that do. So to see a consensus come together, even though it's a, it's a big dollar amount, you know, I've got kids here too and we have a future and, and we do have a drastic difference between what our facility has and what neighbors have. So thank you to those of you that were there and offered your input, I appreciate it.
So the good news is our regular session is next week. So there's not a very long delay between getting all this information and making a decision so we can move forward in a timely manner. Rob Demuse, who just presented from our last school perception survey, has a huge article out about referendums in Wisconsin. So I look forward to working with them in crafting the best kind of survey that we can with the necessary information so that when people are answering the survey questions, they have the information. Anything else right now? Thank you so much for all the work that you did and for coming tonight and presenting, and your enthusiasm is marvelous, thank you.